Well, welcome everyone to the City of Xenia regular city council meeting here on August eighth, and we're going to start with a word of prayer, and I ask everybody to please stand. I'm going to have Pastor Matt Haplick from Grace Hope Church is going to come and pray for us tonight. And before Matt starts, I'll just mention that Matt is the pastor of the newest church in town, although the church is not new, it's been around for a while, but they've moved into to a church home over on Lower Belbrook there, and I'm just really glad to have you here with us in town.
Thank you so much. I'm thankful to be here. We're thankful to be here. Thank you. Father, thank you for today. Thank you that you brought each and every one of us in here safely, Lord. Today, Lord, we just want to pray over the city. We want to pray over the people here, Father, that your Spirit be poured out and they find you, that you would bring peace where there is disunity, that you would bring unity, Lord. Pray over the first responders, the paramedics and the police officers that do so much to protect our city, Father. I pray that you would protect them, that you would keep them safe, that they would go home to their families safely, Jesus. Pray over this meeting today, city council members and everybody here, Father, that you would give them supernatural wisdom and discernment to lead the city in the direction that you would have it go, Father, a city full of peace and love and unity. We thank you. We praise you, Jesus. In your name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen. If you stay standing and face the American flag, I'll have the Vice President go ahead and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And at this time, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Our first item is our roll call.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilwoman Serese?
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Urschel?
Here.
I got notice from Councilwoman Serese that she had a work conflict and would not be able to join us till seven, so I'd like to ask if she could be excused for this, and also from Councilman Dean, he called me earlier today and said that he was ill and would not be able to make it either tonight. So if I could have a motion to excuse both these council people?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor? Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Crawford. Thank you. Let's go ahead and take a vote on that.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Next item is approval of our minutes. First one is from our July 23, 2024 special meeting, and I'd like to have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Yes, okay. Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any comments or questions on that before we vote? Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is our July 22th, 25th, 2024 regular meeting, and I would like to have a motion of approval for those minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any questions or comments on that before we vote? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is special presentations. We do not have any for this evening. Next item after that is audience comments. If you would like to come address the council, feel free to come up to the podium. Please state your name and address in a few five minutes to address the council.
Do I need to do anything for the microphone?
No, you're good. Yeah, just name an address and go ahead. Sure.
My name is Sharon Murphy and my address is 1673 Arizona Court, which is of course in the states. And the first item that I have for you guys is the, there is a home that burnt down in 2020 that is at the entrance of the state's neighborhood on Commonwealth Drive, and this area, this lot has been vacant for four years. It looks like it was transferred earlier this year for $57,000 to Ohio Valley Property Management, and I just wanted to bring up the idea that perhaps this could be a park or made into a little basketball park or something of the sort, because there are quite a few different areas within the state's neighborhood where kids have a basketball hoop sitting on the, sorry, sitting on the road, and you know, they're out playing in traffic and have to get out of the way of cars every time that they start to come. You know, you don't want to have a chance that they might not see a car coming and you know, the car might not see them. So if they had a place that was local that they could walk to or ride their bikes to, to play basketball, that might be a nice thing for the community. And since this is held by a property management company, perhaps they'd be willing to let the property go for a decent amount for the city. The next item that I have is, one of the things I've noticed while living in Xenia is there are quite a few different areas that commercial spaces are for lease that have been for leased for several years, it seems like. This is especially true in West Park Square and along Allison Avenue. So I don't know if this already exists, but I was wondering if there were any special taxes for unoccupied, leasable commercial buildings. And if there isn't, then perhaps something like that could be imposed. After say six months of it being vacant, it is taxed at a higher rate so that there's more of an opportunity to get new businesses in there, or it will encourage them to lower the price to get businesses in there. Because I was looking up like the old Rite Aid building, and the posting that had for that was like $22 a square foot or something like that. That's probably as much as a house costs to buy per square foot. And to lease it per month, that just seems ridiculous. There's no way a small business could afford something like that. No way that we could get an entertainment entity to decide to move to Xenia, perhaps move into that building. And the third item that I have is, in 2023, I reached out to the city of Xenia to obtain a permit to extend my asphalt driveway with a gravel extension. The gravel driveway would have started, well, I live in a cul-de-sac, so there's quite a bit of space between where the extension would start and also, you know, where it would be. It would be completely out of view for most of the people in the neighborhood. But I applied for this permit, and Brian Forchner, the city planner at the time, replied that gravel driveways were not permitted in the city of Xenia or gravel driveway extensions. And I tried to look this information up on Xenia's website by using keywords like driveway, drive spaceway, and gravel, but I was unable to find any ordinances or anything that said, hey, this isn't allowed. So the first item is, is there any place that you can search for this information that is publicly available, or do you have to go to a records clerk of some sort, or something like that? And the other is, I would consider, or I would like to ask you guys to consider potentially making exceptions for certain gravel driveways, gravel driveway extensions. And some of those criteria that you might put in the exception might be, can be no wider than 10 feet. It cannot be within 10 feet of a public sidewalk or road, and the extension must terminate on the side of the building and cannot go into someone's backyard so that don't make a loop around their house or something. So those are my three items for today, and are there any questions about them?
Sure. So when we have, when we have option for audience comments, this is a time for you to address concerns to us, and so it's not interactive, but towards the, towards the end of the council, I mean, we have an opportunity for council comments then, and we may have an opportunity to respond, but trust me, we'll all, thank you so much for the input, and we'll be thinking about all these things.
Okay.
So thank you so much. Anyone else would like to come address the council at this time? I, we have resplained that every property owner in the city must now share costs for the services by a newly passed ordinance by this city council. My address is on Xenia Township Road. The road frontage of our property is township. Our home sits further back on city land with a well and septic system with no connection to the city. Charges are for, one, curb and gutter maintenance. There are no curbs or gutters to maintain on Hedges Road, and if there were, Xenia Township would maintain them. Two, storm wastewater collection. There are no storm basins or list stations for Hedges Road. Three, sanitation. Hedges Road is not swept by the city. Hedges Road does not get leaf collection by the city. Hedges Road does not get any snow removal by the city. In short, I am being charged almost $250 a year for services not rendered. If you charge this to my credit card, I would put it in dispute and win because you have not delivered on your end of the services you say you are providing me. I am asking you to think this through for addresses you may not have considered prior and make provision for Dominic Miller to make exceptions in these cases. In my field, I doubt any of you would want me to send you a nursing bill if I'd never seen you. Please perform the same levels of ethics for me. Signed by Angela Quinn. Thank you. All right, at this time, because we have no more public comments. We'll now go on to your old business. The first item there is ordinance 2024-15, and this is authorizing the transfer of city-owned properties in the Xenia Market District to the Xenia Community Improvement Corporation. And this was introduced by the mayor at our, at our meeting on 7/11/2024. And we will be having a public hearing on this, this evening, and prior to the public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and ask.
Needs to be untabled.
Oh, that's correct. At that time, we had tabled this item, and so thank you. The first thing we need to, I need to have a motion to untable the item so that we can have a public hearing. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Reynolds, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Let's go ahead and vote on that.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Okay, so we are now on table, and, but before we go into the public hearing, Mr. City Manager, would you like to give us a little bit of background on that?
Yeah, as a reminder to your council, this is a recommendation for an ordinance to authorize the transfer of city-owned properties, which essentially is constituted with what is formerly known as the Xenia Town Square, to be called the Xenia Market District. This consists of a total of, I believe it's five parcels at this time, and this would be for the purpose of making the properties available through a transfer or conveyance of property to the Xenia Community Improvement Corporation. And through that arrangement and subs, and yet to be provided to council additional contractual items as elements and parts of our comprehensive redevelopment effort for the market district. And again, that would be all, all be subject to our urban redevelopment plan for the site. I would remind council that the intent is that these would not be immediately transferred and not transferred as one, in one conveyance, but it would be a phased systematic approach over the coming months into 2025. And so we would hope that the first of these transfers would begin by the end of the year, but they won't be complete yet this year.
Great. All right, well, at this time, we're going to go ahead and call the public meeting open, and if anyone would like to come and make a comment either in favor or against or just an observation on this ordinance, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name and address, and you may address the council. Since we have no one who's come at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
If I may. So do we know the timeframe or the central schedule for the demolition of the Ramada Building? Does the county say anything?
Yeah, so again, we don't have a definitive timeline, and this is not on the county, I want to be clear. So the, the funding that's being made available for the grant program is coming from the state of Ohio, the Department of Development, and be conveyed then that funding through Green County Development, and they will actually be coordinating the letting of the demolition project. What Green County has told us is that they are still hopeful that the process will be initiated, as in the bidding process initiated by the end of the year. So our hope is that the demolition can be complete perhaps by the end of the year, but I'll say somewhat comfortably by the end of first quarter next year. Again, so we're grateful for the grant opportunity with the county, and we understand, I just want to be clear, that it's, it's not on the county that delay, it's really on the state getting the funding available and to the county for them to be able to start the bid process.
Do we know like why it's taking someone from the state? Like are they not trying to save the money?
There are many things with the state I wouldn't question, to be very honest. No offense to present company who may be employed by such, but no, I think it's.
The reason I ask is maybe I can text someone about this.
It's another one of those programs that have kind of popped up here somewhat recently, and I think, I think it's, they're kind of establishing the guidelines as they go along for these things. We've seen this with a couple of the other newer programs as well, where the funding, the notice of funding is put out there, the process is initiated, and grant funds are awarded, but not actually funded.
Yeah.
And so, Brent, as I understand it though, the, the contract will be owned and executed by the county as well. So the money's coming from the state, but the county will be the one owning the contract and actually doing demolition.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
They just announced their new round of, you know, demolition for blighted buildings the state did yesterday. And I was like, oh, I should ask when ours, get our money.
Yeah, we're fairly confident that the funding will be available, it's just, you know, that administrative process. I should also point out, I think we're all anxious to get the building down because it does have a blighting influence. That being said, the focus of the next phase of redevelopment at the market district will be to the east of that site, so this won't harm or hinder, hold back any immediate redevelopment opportunity. But I do recognize from council's perspective, and certainly from that of satellite cream cheese in the public, that, you know, there's an expectation that this blighting influence will be removed as soon as possible.
That's all I have. Thank you. Sure, James?
So Mr. City Manager, I was sitting here listening, you know, it just popped in my head. Curious as to whether if secondary, or not secondary marketing, but private investing would be marketed to, for possible incentives to purchase the Ramada in its condition, they would do the demolition, and then they would get some incentive for the development, the removal. Is there, is that, you know, is there a possibility in that venue is my question?
It's not, I mean, is it, is it, is it possible? Yes. I think what we've envisioned for the site is the addition of, of new hospitality ventures based on the evaluation, because we've talked with multiple businesses that either are in the hotel business, in some cases they actually rehab hotels, hotel facilities to bring them up to modern standards. That facility, its design, its age, the lack of infrastructure in the building now and mechanical have not really made it an option to rehabilitate. We were really very hopeful that, that could be done. So my, my thought right now in response is that it probably is not practical for that building, which means then you're, you're limited in how the building could be reused. We also discussed the possibility of some type of multifamily for that building, and again, couldn't find any, any interested parties. So we've explored some of those options. We felt like the, the property is probably more valuable from a redevelopment standpoint to be completely a blank slate rather than with the improvements that are on it right now.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right, this was introduced by the mayor. Would I have a move for approval?
Thank you, sir. His motion to approve.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Any other questions or comments before we move? I just want to say, Brent, thanks, and Danette, and everybody's been involved with this process, and there was some foresight when the CIC was set up a few years ago, right? And I don't know that anybody anticipated it'd be used for this, but what a great timing that we have that available to us to go ahead and move the property and get it, get it developed, so, great. All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could I just add real quickly as well?
Sure.
Of council certification, we did host a community, a Xenia Community Improvement Corporation meeting this past week. Your representative on that group is, is Councilman Crawford, and so I hope I'm not stealing his thunder, but I just wanted to, you know, in conjunction with that, let you know that we've provided a sort of up-to-the-minute update to the CIC, informed them of council's intentions to undertake, in order to, to, to consider this item this evening. So they're completely up to date, and I think poised and ready to move forward when the time is right with those, with those transfers, so.
Great, great. Okay, next item is ordinance 2024-16. This is amending the official zoning map of the city of Xenia, Ohio to rezone the property at 262 South Allison Avenue from R1C1 Family Residential District 7500 to B3 General Business District. And this was introduced by Councilman Reynolds at our meeting on 7/25/2024. We will be having a public hearing on this item as well, and before we start with that, Mr. City Manager, I'd like you to just give us a little more background on this too.
Yeah, again, as a reminder on this one, the property is owned by Altifiber, and they're looking or have constructed that facility here to, as a headquarters for their Green County service delivery, and there, there is more property available at the site than what their facility and their needs are requiring, and so they feel that there's a development opportunity that could be pursued with the rezoning. Again, the city's evaluated in support of the rezoning, and it's gone through the administrative process through a planning and zoning commission, which voted to endorse as well.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone has any comments, observations on this, please come to the podium and just state your name and address, and go ahead and share your thoughts with council.
So my name is Tommy Smith, and I'm the real estate manager. We're the owners of 262 South Allison Avenue, and also I was the applicant for the zoning change.
Sure.
As Ms. Merwin said, we have a small network facility on the northern side of the property. It's about 500 square feet, and it typically is unmanned. We go there for equipment upgrades and service changes like that, but there's nobody that's reporting to the building five days a week. So with all that excess land, and it being a corner front of July, we thought it'd be a great opportunity to get some sort of customer-facing business in that spot. We just think there's better uses than our, I mean, our service is fantastic, but not customer-facing. We think something that publicly should be used in a better way. So that was kind of the cause for us submitting the application. And I also just wanted to say I'm here to answer any questions that may have come up in the time set.
Great, great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Brent.
I do have one question for him.
Yes, hey, go ahead. Ethan, go ahead.
Have you had anyone like look at the property yet, or is this just kind of the beginning phases?
In terms of like having an interested buyer?
Yeah.
No, not yet. We were almost doing this in preparation to begin marketing it because we thought the residential use, there didn't have as many opportunities for the redevelopment for customer-facing businesses like I suggested.
Awesome. Thank you.
We did receive a email comment, and I'm going to go ahead and read this in the record here during the public comment time. And this is from Dave and Nancy Stell on 252 and 254 South Allison. They say, "To whom it may concern, we are writing to express our concerns about the proposed zoning change for 262 South Allison Avenue. We strongly object to this change and would like the proposed rezoning to be stopped. We would like the area to stay residential. Since moving to Ohio from Illinois in August 2022 due to a job opportunity at Cedarville University, we have been facing unexpected challenges with our new home. Unfortunately, there were undisclosed issues with the property we purchased, and most, and the, and the most surprising issue was the construction of a business establishment right next to our home. We would not have purchased this home if we knew a business was planned adjacent to our property. Admittedly, our research should have been more thorough before purchasing property. Still, the urgency of our move and the competitive housing market led, led us to overlook certain details. We are concerned about the proposal to change the zoning of our street from residential to commercial. Given the existing concentration of businesses on our street, it would be more beneficial for the area to prioritize residential zoning. We apologize for the delayed response to the letter as we are away on vacation for most of this month. We have several concerns regarding the proposed zoning change, including the potential impact on our property value, increased traffic, elevated crime rates, and the nature of businesses that may be established in the area. Our transition to Xenia has not been entirely positive, but we believe everything is within God's control, including our choice of residence. While we are uncertain about the impact of our feedback, it is essential to voice our concerns." So we've got that right into the record at this time. Does anyone else have any comments or observations they'd like to present to the council at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. This was introduced by Councilman Reynolds. At our last meeting, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to move to approve ordinance 2024-16.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor? All right.
Question.
Sure.
Our planner.
Go ahead, Wes.
Hey, Brian, I have a question for you. So looking at the map here, the only thing B3 close to that is down the street, so wouldn't that be more spot zoning than we normally have?
We did, we did consider that in the review, and there is, there's already a mix of zoning in the area. There's industrial zoning, there is multifamily zoning, as well as B3. There are patches of B3 along that corridor. It is a very diverse corridor and the uses that exist there. There are apartments mixed with businesses, retailing, and industrial as well. Felt that this was kind of continuation of the existing pattern that already has been established, and it is also a transition from the industrial zoning west to the residential on Allison. So, and it is also this property, or comprehensive plan recommends, business, business district designation for that, for that property. And this property does allow on a conditional basis some of the industrial uses that will be allowed there, but at the same time, it provides a more of a gradual transition between heavy industrial and residential next door. So it's really kind of an improvement on the comprehensive plan.
Sure.
It balances the needs of, the goals of the comprehensive plan with the needs of the adjacent residents, which are to have a buffer in Xenia.
Because I, I kind of, it was a couple of years ago, I think I was the chair of planning when this came, application came from all of my, is that, it's just a shed right there, right, and there are 700?
Yeah, so what that is, is it's largely an equipment building, and it's, it meets the definition of a utility structure in our code, and that is something that's permitted in that rezoning district.
So this, so if this is rezoned, then they could split that lot then and just keep there?
Exactly. They could keep what they have, and there could be additional development that is south of the building.
How much space would that be? Is that even an acre? Would that be enough space for a business?
Yes.
It's an acre?
It's an exactly acre, but it's, it's a large enough lot.
They are here.
Oh, they're up in there.
Right. Where, did you, they're up in here. The residential person. Yeah. I just grazed.
I guess the only thing I would comment about, that's a, that's a very heavily trafficked corner there. And so.
That was the other rationale of justifying both the comprehensive plan recommendation and the proposed zoning that's an intersection of two thoroughfares. And the non-residential use was more conducive to that site than residential. And to answer your earlier question, I did just calculate the acreage, and it's roughly about three quarters of an acre.
Sure.
That's if you take the area that's south of that.
Sure. Okay, great. Thanks, Brian.
I have a quick question, Brian. So all this red is B3, correct? That surrounds all this yellow, which is residential? So this is not spot zoning, because it's literally right just adjacent down the street, where they probably live is over in this little area here, or this area, and it's all red, B3 around it, so.
Right. I mean, I, I think Councilman Smith raises a legitimate question because there is a bit of a patchwork of zoning in the area, but we felt that it was mitigated by the other factors that I mentioned.
So Brian, I have a question for you. In, in your observation, could you say that the residential that's there is not harmed by the development that has gone on thus far?
Well, I think that's, you know.
In terms of its market value, or have you taken a look at that, or, because I haven't.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's a bit of a subjective issue, and it's kind of, it depends on who you talk to, but we did, one of the requirements that we have in the code for construction of these utility structures is that buffering be installed between the structures and surround residential uses, and they did comply with that.
Okay.
So in that case, you know, in that sense, it was, you know, that, those impacts were mitigated.
Thank you.
I think the other item here too is that the location of the, of the Altifiber unit is on, on the one end of the parcel, it's probably not going to be developed, and so there'd be a. and so there'd be a, a buffer of that parcel with that unit and the, the items that we talked about that were put in place, it would put it between any business use and the, and the residential properties that are on the other sides of the, of the, of the Altifiber structure there, too. Right? That might be a little bit different if that had been placed at the other end of the, the lot.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
And was this lot originally zoned industrial?
No, it's been zoned, uh, since then, the residential.
For how long?
For quite some time. I don't know exactly.
Well, quite some time is good enough for me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Questions or comments from council? Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
All right. Next item, this is also a public war, uh, hearing and this is ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen, amending the official zoning map of the city of Xenia, Ohio to rezone the property at ten sixty Lower Bellbrook Road from A one agricultural district to the R two two-family residential district. This was introduced by Councilman Reynolds at our last council meeting. And uh, we're going to go ahead and do the public hearing first. Before we do that, uh, Mr. City Manager, if you give us an overview of this as well.
Yeah, this is a proposal or request to uh adjust the zoning as indicated. Uh, this would allow for um the purpose of the developing Eden Bridge East, uh, which has previously discussed with council, some prior actions related to Eden Bridge, uh, development uh adjacent to this. Um, so it's, it's been something that we've been discussing for a while. Um, again, the, uh, the, the rezoning was uh evaluated by staff and staff found it to be an appropriate uh use of the property. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission did uh vote to endorse uh the rezoning as well and so it is presented to the council this evening for consideration.
Okay, great. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the public hearing open and if anyone would like to come and address the council with uh either in favor or against or just observations on this, please feel free to come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, as we have no one at this time, we have no uh email comments either, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And uh, Councilman Reynolds, would you like to uh move for approval?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventeen.
Okay, let's move by the Councilman Reynolds. Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Seconded by Councilman Crawford. Questions or comments from council here before we go?
I just have one comment on it.
Sure.
I actually went up to Troy this weekend, uh, they have a very development just like this with the duplex, it's seamless, it looks very nice, you know, it worked really well for them. I talked to one of their council members and mayor and they're just like, oh yeah, it's not had any problems, so I think it's a good idea. Helps bring more families into Xenia.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I just drove through that residential area yesterday and it's amazing to see how many families are there in residence and, uh, you know, for our community. It's just, it's, 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 it's very heartening to see that as well, so thanks. All right, let's go ahead and uh call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Next item, this is also a public hearing tonight. This is ordinance twenty twenty four dash eighteen, enacting chapter two eighty seven titled Xenia Public Art Commission of Title Eight Boards, Commissions, and Committees of the City Government Code. And this was introduced by the mayor at our last council meeting. Uh, Mr. City Manager, would you just give us an overview here prior to our public hearing?
Yeah, the, uh, staff's recommending creation of this new Xenia Public Art Commission uh and the intent behind this is to provide a platform for uh guidance and assistance uh in considering um any type of public art that may be pursued in the community to bring forward individuals who have uh knowledge and interests in that sphere, uh, to provide uh support and guidance to the staff and then ultimately to the council uh on such matters. And so this would be a change in our code that would provide for a permit committee for, or a permit commission for, for this purpose. Easy for me to say.
Great. Thanks, Brent. All right, let's go ahead and call the public hearing open at this time. If you'd like to come and address the council, feel free to come to the podium. All right, as we have no one at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Mayor, would you like to uh move for approval of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. I'd like to move for passage.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Questions or comments from council?
I have a question, Mr. City Manager, on the powers and duties on section three to undertake fundraising efforts to promote community art projects. Just curious, I, I, just, just about the line verbiage, I just want a little bit of clarity. What are you seeing there?
Yeah, so um, I think, um, I think the intent is that there is an opportunity um for the installation of public art that would be promoted by the community and funded by the community rather than using necessarily government funds.
Okay.
And I'm not talking about any specific project, I'm just saying as IVAs may come forward in the future, um, so there are, there, it is a possibility for individuals to donate monies to the city for the purpose for various, whether it be recreation or art or things like that. Um, and so this would empower this group to serve in that capacity, um, uh, to help coordinate those fundraising efforts.
You could use the sand art as an example. That's a, um, something that I go out and ask help for and there's in do fundraising for. So, all of the art that you see, the sand cap, the uh sand art that you see for the July, um, block party is based on fundraising. So, that is something that we do, that I do currently that would be more in this committee's role.
Thank you for answering that and making that clear. Um, that's all I have.
I think, I think for the two murals that were painted, there was, there was.
Yeah, those were grant funds. Um, so again, you know, not, not direct city tax dollars for that purpose. Um, so, you know, again, I think we, we feel like this is important, but it's also maybe not the top financial priority, so this allows us.
Right.
An opportunity to, to pursue funding through individuals that find this type of addition to be important for the community and it's just a vehicle to help facilitate.
Yeah, didn't the United Way help with the, the wall murals?
Yep.
And then we also had the grant funded one at, at the park, right?
Yeah, which was through uh Juvenile Corcoran.
Right.
And people like me should not be approving art because I'm happy I'm someone else doing it.
There's some of us should stay far away from anything to do with that. Correct. All right. Let's, any other questions or comments? All right, let's go ahead and call the vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay. Next item, this is under new business. This is resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four seven, authorizing the purchase of a twenty twenty eight Sutten custom fire engine and accessories through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program for Xenia Fire and EMS Division. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Our Fire and EMS Division has in its service a two thousand thirteen rescue fire engine, which is reaching the end of its life expectancy uh as a frontline apparatus. Uh, while we have anticipated in our CIP the replacement of a two thousand six engine currently utilized as a reserve engine with the intent that this two thousand thirteen rescue engine uh would then be moved into that reserve capacity, um, this transition was not necessarily planned until twenty twenty nine. However, uh, we've been ma, made aware that there is currently a forty-two month, forty-two month lead time um to have fabrication of this type of equipment, um, and, and we'd be subject to that wait. Uh, this means we'd have to commit to the new engine now in order to receive it in twenty twenty nine. Uh, additionally, we're also notified that uh pricing of new fire engines uh will have an increase of three to five percent again in September of this year and we've been told an additional increase is anticipated at the start of twenty twenty five. Uh, thus, we recommend that council approve um this purchase to lock in the pricing now. Uh, that estimated or that quote uh for fabrication is one million thirty-nine thousand three hundred ten dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, this would allow us then to secure place in line for delivery in approximately four to five years, which is within the schedule we had originally anticipated. Uh, funds for this purchase won't be dispersed immediately, it'll be not till around probably twenty twenty eight, uh, once the new engine is uh delivered or, or, or nearly delivered. Uh, once received, the new engine uh will be a frontline rescue engine that we would place in service at station thirty-one and that current foot, engine thirty-one uh would become a reserve fire engine. And again, we keep these, you know, keep a rotation um with our older fleet, uh, so that if we do have a frontline, uh, vehicle go down or require maintenance for some reason, um, that we can continue to, to operate as normal. Um, we are proposing to make this purchase through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. Um, this is uh under section seven, or excuse me, nine point zero eight B three of our uh city code. Uh, Sourcewell is a competitive bidding service and so we are meeting our um, uh, competitive procurement standards by utilizing that particular function. Uh, Sutten is an Ohio-based company, uh, they have uh fabrication facilities at multiple locations, including uh not too far away in Springfield, up in Hilliard area, Dublin as well. Um, so we are recommending that council authorize um this. Again, there's no immediate expenditure, but uh authorizing the purchase will allow us to make a commitment and get into the queue. Um, a couple of the points that I would add, um, part of the reason we're experiencing uh this uh significant increase in these costs because this is quite literally almost twice as much as we are, have been accustomed to, um, uh, in terms of the, the new, the new, or at least for a rescue engine, uh, what the cost would be. Uh, it's a supply and demand issue, uh, combined with um just the cost of materials and the inflationary factors. A lot of municipalities across Ohio uh sought to use their, their ARPA funding uh in a, in a manner that provided for um purchase of new equipment like this. So, that's, that's also not only a cost issue, but the, the, the lead time issue as well. Uh, sister community located next door to West Beaver Creek, they just, they ordered five engines, um, which seems excessive to me, but I'll stop with the political commentary. Um, so again, you know, there's, there's lots of folks ahead of us. Um, it, it is not with, uh, you know, we, we, we bring this to you, we understand this is a lot of money, uh, but the rescue engine is, is a particularly important piece of equipment because for any motor vehicle accidents or unique uh, uh, uses or, uh, situations require a lot of technical equip, equipment, that's the vehicle that houses all of that equipment. Um, so making sure that it's roadworthy and reliable is, is a pretty important priority for us. So, happy to answer any questions. I think we have Deputy Chief Bogan here who can answer any specific questions on it. Again, uh, Sutten is the company we use, been very happy with them and this would give us a, a place in line for the purchase and placement here a few years down the road.
What's the, what would happen with what would be the third engine then or the, the two thousand six chassis model? What would, what do we anticipate we would do with that?
Yeah, we go through a, a process to surplus that, um, again, pursuant to our charter and, and, and code. Um, a lot might speak to what kind of, what details of the, with the rotation, but, but anything down the line, there would be a piece of equipment that we would no longer need and so we would surplus that.
Do we anticipate we'd get any value for that?
You would get some, but don't get your hopes up because that, yeah.
Who's buying a O six fire engine?
An O six?
I think, I think the estimated value, the last, the last vehicle that we, the last engine that we surplus was twenty-five grand or less, something like that.
Wow, okay.
That's still a lot for, you know, fire engine, oh, I think it is, like, I would pay that for O six, but of any kind.
O eight, maybe.
O eight, yeah, but.
So, so, sorry, I got a question for, for Ryan. So, uh, so we're the twenty twenty four council and we're encumbering the twenty twenty eight council with an expense. So, how are we helping over these next four years, are we amortizing that and setting funds aside so that from that council, or is that, is that, is that going to be a one-time bill within that fiscal year?
No, what we would probably do is um, is seek a capital lease to finance that engine over probably a five to seven-year period.
In the future from that?
In the future, uh, when we actually receive that, that apparatus. The three sixty-four fund is uh, is our public safety capital fund and it's pretty strained right now. Um, council just approved at the last meeting, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the ladder truck rehab.
Right.
And uh, there are not even seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund right now, so.
Right.
I think I mentioned to the last meeting, we would be seeking capital lease proceeds to try to cover a, a portion of that. Um, we're hearing back and I told, I think I stated last time, it's a little bit tricky because uh these companies aren't, or these banks typically aren't accustomed to financing a piece of equipment that's, um, how it's ladder truck and not twenty years old. Um, and so what we're hearing back right now is a little bit of reluctance from some of those lenders, so we may even ultimately have to come back to council and say, hey, let's pay what we can in cash out of three sixty-four and then maybe do a, an interfund loan from the general fund and pay for that over a period of time. So, uh, right now, I think it's around five percent of our tax revenue that we receive into that fund and we're not obligated to do that. That's really just been council's policy is to allocate that portion to public safety capital, um, which we, we know is not sufficient long-term when we talk about things like a new fire station and these uh different fire apparatus. Um, over time, there is enough money in that fund right now at that rate to fund some of these apparatus, but anything over that, there really isn't and it's really only adequate when you're stretching it out over a period of time through financing, so.
This, I just want to add again.
Sure.
And, and probably more for the public than for council, but um, this is, we would not typically come back with a, you know, a, an expenditure like the uh rehabilitation of the, of the, of the ladder truck and then on the heels of that do this.
Right.
Um, just some extenuating unique circumstances here. This lead time is probably the biggest issue. Certainly, you know, locking in the pricing, I, I don't see a scenario where this is, you know, where we to delay this.
Kind of declining price.
It's only going to get more expensive in the environment that we are in with the policy decisions that are being pursued at the federal level. So, um, again, might even be a little bit different if this was just an engine, but the fact that, uh, you know, this is the only equipment truck, if you will, uh, with the, the type of equipment that we have, so we really need a reliable, a piece of equipment that would be available really when we need it, which is, you know, a couple of years down the road here. So, I just want to stress that we wouldn't typically bring these things back at such, such close dead, but that's, that's why.
Yeah. Well, Mike, now I understand why one of the Xenia township trustees was a little bit reticent to loan out their new truck to Xenia after they just faced, not this kind of expense, but a very large expense, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, maybe just, uh, am I right? It was about five hundred fifty thousand when we were, when we did this one back in thirteen?
Yes, we're sitting almost at double what.
Yeah.
Fire engine that we, that we ordered in twenty twenty.
Right, right.
And I'm sure technology has much to do with that as well.
Um, there's a little bit of technology, but it's more like the city manager said, uh, materials and the, the, you know, supply and demand that we're facing today that we haven't in the past.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, James.
Mr. Finance Director, um, you, you mentioned interfund loan. Is that sourced through, i- is that like a, a private investor that does or is that a bank or?
No.
Is that different?
No, we, we, we often talk about our reserve and our key operating funds, uh, primarily our general fund, uh, that we try to keep a certain reserve available and you can use the reserve for that type of a scenario where, um, you don't have cash in another fund, you loan it to a fund with the intent of paying it back over time. It's not the ideal solution, but having reserve does give you some flexibility to do those types of things, whereas if you didn't have a reserve, you, you'd have no way to fund that type of expense if you couldn't get the financing. to fund that type of expense if you couldn't get the financing. So it's really using dollars in the general fund over a period of time, paying that back to the general fund as dollars were ceded into the capital.
And do you charge yourself interest in that process?
You, you could. I don't know that it would, that it would really be of benefit to the city to do that in this scenario, because you're, you're, you're really just transferring tax dollars from one place to another.
I see.
It's, it's all the same funding source, it's all funded by income tax revenue, it's just which portion of the revenue does council want to allocate for those purposes. The other thing council could do is just say, we wanna increase the, you know, percentage that we want to transfer on an annual basis into the capital improvement fund, but then that leaves you less for other key operating, key operating expenses.
Absolutely. And so, so you use the word accrual in your, in your business practices, correct, or your accounting practices? The word accrual can be used.
Sure, yeah.
So couldn't you just accrue, since you, since we know we're, we're in favor of the purchase, couldn't you increase the accrual to get us down the road?
Well, well, you could increase the transfer to that fund so that at the time at which the purchase actually occurs, there would be a larger balance in that fund, and less that would need to be borrowed in order to pay for. But again, when you do that, you're, you're decreasing the amount of monies available for other operating functions in the meantime, in the, you know, in the next couple of years. So, yeah, absolutely. It really is up to council, and we can talk about that in the budget committee meetings, and as we're developing financial management policies and goals. We can, we can always alter those and allocate money to one initiative over another. So there is a way to do it to, over time, try to build up a balance in that fund so that come 2028, there's less that needs to be borrowed. But you're taking dollars away from other key operating initiatives, because it's all key operating funds.
Well, thank you for answering that question for me.
And I guess part of what I'm hearing too is the reality is, if we, we can't defer that decision to the 2028 council, because we wait till that point, we won't see an agent until 2032 or 33.
Right, or who knows?
Or who knows at that point?
I do have one comment. I was reading through the contract, I thought this was like my favorite part of the contract is in J, it says, "To the extent applicable, the supplier must buy all applications provisions by American compliance." So it's American-made, employing Americans, and it's awesome.
Great. Any more questions for Deputy Chief?
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments from the council? All right, let's go ahead and call a vote. Did I do a motion? I haven't done a motion yet. I have a motion to, to, to adopt the resolution. Moved by the mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Reynolds. All right, now we'll go ahead and call a vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, next item is Resolution 2024-48, that's awarding the bid and authorizing the purchase of deicing salt for the 2024-26 timeframe from Cargill Incorporated through the SWOP 4G Cooperative Purchasing Program. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Similar to our last item, the city for procurement of our deicing road salt utilizes a joint purchasing program that does the competitive bidding for us. This particular program is called the Southwest Ohio Purchasers for Government Cooperative Purchasing. We know it as Swap 4G. Council may remember hearing that term before. Typically, road deicing salt is the primary thing we use that service for, which again, we've used this year, thus this item. On June 24th of this year, competitive bids from salt suppliers were received by Swap 4G. The city requested bids for supply of up to 1,500 tons of deicing salts for both our winter year 24, 25, as well as 25 and 26. We received bids from four providers, which is actually somewhat unique given the historic standards, usually it's not more than a couple. We're very fortunate that low bids from Cargill were received for the next two winter seasons that were significantly lower than previous years, so we're thrilled to see that. And those bids came in at 62.01 and 72.1 respectively for the forthcoming winter season, so we're recommending the city and council authorize us to commit to this purchase. We will more than likely, at least for the first year of this cycle, purchase everything as much as we can of that 1,500 tons, because that's the smaller amount, even if we don't necessarily need it all for this year, simply because we can get at a lower price than we probably will be able to get, certainly next year, if not beyond. We've tried to ramp up our policy in terms of treatment. This is a very, very expensive service, mile for mile, with the materials we put down, the wear and tear on your fleet, fuel, it's usually with overtime staff, it's a very expensive service. So historically, we've been somewhat judicious. But again, as winters haven't been quite as bad up late, we, when we do get those storms, we try to get out early, often, and put a lot of material down. So again, trying to provide a good service here, but also do it within our budget. So again, recommending council authorize the purchase and lock us in for the salt for the next two seasons.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Crawford, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Reynolds, questions or comments? Brent, do we use, oh, James, go ahead.
No, Mr. City Manager, again, I'm giving you these ideas as I'm sitting here. And so, knowing that you, for the 2024 and the 2025 cost, you know, I, there's a, there's a term in my background, we, we call it forward buying. Knowing that there's gonna be an increase of pricing, do we have a way of just forward buying and saying, this is what's best for our city, let's store this, let's get, let's get, let's get ample more than what we need, and I would assume we're gonna have another salt winter, but regardless, I'm just saying, do we have another house?
Yeah, that's a fair question. I think there are a couple of points in response. One, we will do that to some extent, because remember that our barn is not empty now, so we have a fair amount of material on hand now. And previously, when I referenced the fact that we would probably purchase the whole 1,500 tons this year, it's really essentially doing back, that we're locking in at the lower price, because we know if we do have a bad storm next year, for example, we would rather not have to buy it at $10 more a ton. So we can do that to some extent. The one thing that, there are two things that inhibit that. One is, we can only purchase up to the amount that we saw bid for for this year, for that very reason, because if it is a really bad winter, or excuse me, a really good winter for us this year, those salt companies want to be able to maximize their profit at some point, so, so they're only gonna lock in a price for a given year at a given amount.
Got it, that answers it.
Yeah. And the second, and this is more functional, but our barn is not huge, and so we really, you know, we can't hold much more than 1,500 ton at a time anyway. We've explored other options to try to increase that, but frankly, it's just pretty costly to, you know, to construct additional, additional storage capacity for this, and probably the more inhibiting factor is with the, if you recall, with the landfill situation adjacent to our service center, any type of construction requires a lot of environmental due diligence, due diligence through Ohio EPA, so it's, it would add a lot of cost and a lot of hassle to try to construct additional storage out there for that purpose.
Makes sense, thank you.
Brent, you know, do we do beet juice?
We do, yeah, yeah. We do a couple of different things in conjunction with this, depending on the winter weather conditions that we're facing. If we anticipate that there's weather that's coming in, and perhaps it's gonna come in on a, you know, Saturday evening, Friday we'll go out and put brine down. Brine is a great sort of first, and we do that during normal business hours, so we can void the overtime. So brine's one material we use. The beet juice is another material we use. Typically, we use that material when you're expecting a lot of winter precipitation, ice especially, but then it's gonna be accompanied with extremely cold temperatures.
Right.
The real value of the beet juice is it allows salt to be much more effective at lower temperatures. While folks might not realize this, once you get down below maybe 28, 27 degrees, salt doesn't vary effective, it's just, it's just too cold for that chemical reaction, so the beet juice enhances the effectiveness of the salt at the colder weather.
Great, okay, good. Because I knew the county was using the beet juice.
Yep, we're actually one of the early adopters of that methodology in the area, and that's of course been, you know, probably 15 years ago.
Right, great.
I just want to comment, thank you for the job Public Service does. I think they do an excellent job. I know a lot of people give them grief, but you probably remember a time when our policy in 2010 was if it's not four inches, the plows don't go out. That's how tight we were in 2010.
Yeah, we've been much more, much more liberal in application of this, trying to get roads up as quickly as we can, but also trying to, you know, contain costs, but just striking that balance, yeah. So you're right, Wes, it's, we're, they do, they don't get the credit they deserve. When no one else feels safe to go out in these conditions, they're out all night, trying to open up roads for schools and for businesses to be able to open up the next day, and they don't get the credit they deserve.
I appreciate the, the body history of the pricing, to see it fluctuate like that.
The volatility, yeah.
It's just crazy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions? We'll go ahead and call a vote.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Urschel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is, this is a discussion item, this has to do with the city council priorities for fiscal year 2025. And just as a background, in the past, we had developed some budgetary priorities through our budget committee, principally looking at affecting the budget line items, and we, as we had redone our charter in the past to try and align with the Ohio Revised Code requirements, we had set that aside. But in, over the last couple of years, just had some discussion that we felt that we needed to have the council providing for, not only for the council, but also for the staff, priorities that are broader than budget. These have to do many times with things that would be interactions with other public entities and the council, and practices that we'd like to see happen, and planning items and those types of things, putting, you know, planning documents together for various items that aren't necessarily going to affect a budget, but would affect how we're operating here within the city. So we spent a little bit of time in some of the subcommittees, or some of our committees, and discussions, some of our work sessions about what a set of these priorities would be. We had some interaction with the staff as well, and Brent, thanks so much. We had Jared had an opportunity to give us some feedback on that, Brent as well too. So what you see tonight is a summation of, of a set of work that's gone on really for the last couple of months. And we had, had some more discussion at our work session at the last council meeting on the 25th. And so we, at that time, we said that we would bring this up as a discussion item tonight, voting on this tonight, but it's time for discussion amongst ourselves, and that we would be coming back on the, on the 22nd of our next scheduled meeting there, through procedural motions, that we would be approving this, if that's the role of council at that time. This, we've coalesced these priorities in seven, seven areas on the economic development, and I think a lot of that had been spurred on with the recent work, and tremendous work has been done by Ryan and Brent and Danette, as we looked into the market district, and some of the public financing structures and opportunities there that we'd like to see probably applied at other portions of the city as well and into the future. Parks and Recreation, and once again, great work for the Next Plan folks, and they did a lot of work in that area as well in terms of what we should be anticipating there, so we identified some of those items there. Our public infrastructure, and I think most people think about roads, but we're responsible not only for roads, but the water and sewer system, the stormwater structure, and dispersment of stormwater, the curbs and sidewalks, and the lighting of the city. And so we've asked for some more comprehensive planning on some of those items, and additional look at how we do some financing for those items as well. Public safety and health, in the past, we spent a lot of time talking about police and fire and dispatch, but I think we also have a sense of the welfare of the community from, from healthcare here in our city as well too, and so there's some items there that are associated with that. And also, under public safety and health, there's issues associated with vagrancy and homelessness, and how do we interact with other entities, and what do we need to be putting on our, from our side of the equation to address those things. Community relations, this has to do with how we're interacting with a lot of the other public entities within the county, so whether that's our court system, or the county commissioners, or the school district, or the townships and those type of items, and having some more structured approach towards that. And the last item is just with municipal services, and ensuring that we have the right mix of folks to go take care of municipal services, and, and also our pay structures for all employees too. So those are, those are the broad areas, there are a number of, of, of specific action items that we list underneath those. Obviously, none of these, I don't think there's any anticipation, all of these are gonna be accomplished in one year, or maybe even a set of years, but it does provide some vision in terms of, of things that we believe are important for our city. And I believe for the first time, at least from a council perspective, gives us an opportunity to say, yes, these are the, these are the critical items that we would like to see us working on. And I say "us" because there's a lot of work in each of these areas that can be done by the council members and advocacy by us, and each of us have some different areas of expertise and communities that we're involved with, and that we can step into that. But also, as we work with our staff too, to say, these are things we want to be tracking and ensuring that we're gonna be addressing, also for our council committees, and for some of our boards and commissions as well too, this gives some guidance for them too. So that's just sort of an overview on that, we're not gonna go into all the detailed steps, we've done that a couple of times at some work sessions. But just as I'm saying those things, any other questions or thoughts here from the other council members tonight on this?
I would just note, oftentimes in our, January, we get together in January usually for a day and have a retreat day. This is something that we come back to, so this is actually helping us to kind of get a head start with some of that, and allows us to keep it in writing, which helps to keep it in front of us. So this is not a new concept for us as council, I would say, this is just helping us to maybe get there a little faster, and to keep us a little more, us as council, more accountable in some of our discussions, to keep us on track.
Right, and as I mentioned to the staff before, I think also, our, our folks do a tremendous job of, of taking direction and implementing that. And I think if that, if, there was only one comment I had on the original X plan was, I don't think we did justice with communicating how much that had actually been implemented, you know, because it was just a huge amount of that that was set out, and that was really a dream, right, 10 years ago. And I, and I remember as we did the community interaction, a lot of those things, saying, there's no way these things could happen, and what do you do? They actually came about. So one of my hopes is that we're, we're able to give incremental credit for the, for the deployment of the next plan. But then, I truly believe, as we go through this over the next year or two, we're gonna find significant progress on each of these items, because I know the staff has already stepped up in, in a lot of ways, you're downstream on a lot of these items already. It's just gonna give us some visibility and make sure we're keeping these, you know, within our focus and stuff too. So, yeah, Brent, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanna kind of reiterate with council, the point that we discussed when you last talked about this in a work session, which is, I think it would be prudent as the budget committee would continue its efforts, that, you know, this be front and center, but also that we take some time in addition to your normal meeting schedule as we get into the fall, and have some dialogue where council can provide some direction to staff in terms of these priorities, sort of what are the priorities among these priorities?
Right, right, right.
It's a good list of goals and objectives, not all of which is accomplishable next year, in part because many of these things will take partnership arrangements, contracts, whatever it might be. So again, getting some priorities among those priorities, those, those things that you absolutely want us to pursue in fiscal year 25, and, and again, we'll, we'll seek to, you know, to pursue that, to apply some measurable metrics to it, and hopefully start tracking things off the list.
Yeah, and once again, I just encourage the rest of our council members, as you're looking at this, to think about, okay, what, what can I do, right, to step up and help move the ball down the field in some of these areas? And so this, this is important, because we set these priorities, this is, this is a holistic set of priorities for all of us, right, to be pursuing.
So if I can interject, we, we are not prioritizing these as number one through seven, but it's interesting, just six months ago, when we had our meeting in January, that at this time, we would never expect public safety and health to be top of mind.
Yeah.
But it is. And I think we all know that as an elected official, that healthcare for our citizens is top priority, and I think we're being a little more vocal about that at this time, because I, I personally, and this is just me, as a citizen, I feel we have a wellness crisis in our community, because we have a lot of urgent cares. And, you know, what we need is a hospital, and a comprehensive hospital that can take care of a crisis, and can actually treat our residents. So that, that's just me speaking. But I, I think it's interesting that, that these are intertwined, because without the infrastructure in place, economic development's not gonna happen.
Right.
But without economic development, we can't pay for infrastructure.
Right.
Right there. So it, you know, and I know people get frustrated because they don't understand the process. And I keep hearing streets, streets, streets. We get it, we understand, there's just, it's a financing concept, that's. And what you're seeing tonight with the cost of this engine, that's a million dollars, that four years ago was a half million dollars, it's just like, if you're having a hard time putting food on the table, we're having a hard time getting the equipment to keep you safe. So, you know, it's just, it's just crazy. I've never seen this in the time that I've been up here, that I just, I can only imagine in three to four years what it's gonna be like again. So I think, yeah, we're doing the best we can with what we have. That dollar is just getting stretched super thin. We have a lot of people that want to live in Xenia, but I also feel like we got to listen to our residents for what they want. And I, and I saw very vocal opinions on social media. I don't respond to it, but I do read it, because I get it, it's people's way of communicating to their leaders what they want. And what people are wanting right now is good healthcare in our community. I know we'll probably have a discussion about that here in a little bit, but I just wanted to throw that out there as we talk about our council priorities, and, you know, and sometimes, as an elected official, community relations, they get strained. They get strained with their neighbors, they get strained with entities that we work with, they get strained with the schools, they get strained with the county, they get strained with the township, central state, everybody. Okay, there's times where relationships are strained, but then we have to heal and move forward. And I think that's, we're always open to listen, nobody ever feels that they're right, and it's our way or no way, but I, I think sometimes as strong leadership, we have to take the position of pushing forward on, on something until we see fruition on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think another thing that has just radically changed the last couple of years too has been development. And, you know, since the early 2000s, you know, development stalled out. I mean, it wasn't just here in Xenia, it was nationally to a larger extent. And just recently, to, to see, you know, the residential development, the business interests and those type of things, but that's also spurting some interests and those type of things, but that's also spurring us on to say, okay, we didn't really need to look at economic incentives because there wasn't much to incentivize, but now we do, right? And so this is a time for us to make sure we've got all the all the tools in the toolbox that are available to us to to get that out there so that we can capture those business opportunities and that they're not going to other municipalities that are using those tools and we're not, we don't have them available for us. So, yeah. All right, would someone, so this, we don't need an introduction, this was just a discussion item tonight, but we will be bringing this up at our next council meeting for us to throw a procedural motion to go ahead and approve. Great, okay. All right, that was the last item on our new business. Next item is appointed official report, so we'll start with Mr. Duke, finances.
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't have anything for you this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Right, thank you for the financial report as always, and it was it was hopeful, I say, right?
Yeah, there are definitely some some very good things, some very good trends, especially on the revenue side, we're seeing some very positive things. Now on the expense side, as we've, you know, just talked about, we're seeing some trends that aren't as as good. But generally, generally, yeah, I think revenues are exceeding expenditures, which is always a good thing, much better than what we see at, let's say, the federal level, but I I think we're seeing a lot of very good good things on the revenue side that give us reason to be optimistic. There's still a lot of needs which we are continually talking about and and trying to figure out ways to address, but I I do think there's some very some very good signs in what we're seeing financially, so.
Any questions or comments for Ryan? Thanks. Madam Law Director.
I think this is very helpful, your list of priorities. I look forward to, I hope in the future, we do have more discussion. I went through and circled, okay, I got something to do here, I got something to do here. So to really kind of get into the weeds of what you guys are thinking on some of these, the the only one I did kind of want to address under economic development on the tax delinquency foreclosure.
Yes.
A just your council note, I send you my to-do list every month, so you can see all those.
Yes.
Since they brought the tax foreclosure process in-house, David Hayes brought that into his office, it's been fantastic. It's been absolutely fantastic. Our our issue isn't the foreclosure process, our issue is if a tax foreclosed property is not sold at sheriff's sale.
Correct.
We either have the option of taking it by forfeiture, and there are certain situations that we just can't take it by forfeiture. If there's mortgage, if there's outstanding tax liens, we can't touch those properties, they get forfeited to the state. So far, we've been very lucky in that all the other taxing entities, Xenia Community Schools, the Career Center, the Health District, the County, have all agreed to waive delinquent taxes on those properties that we take, that we're not paying for that. It still costs us between $2,000 to $3,000, usually just in court costs, for every property we take. The hope was that the county auditor was going to start holding the...
Auditor sales.
ORC required.
Right.
Forfeiture sales. If council recalls, you passed a resolution in February authorizing the city manager to purchase properties at those sales.
Correct.
We could get them cheaper, it would save our residents money, and once a property gets forfeited to the state, if those sales aren't happening...
They just sit there, right?
The property's just sitting. We we can't assess mowing charges on it, we can't do any of that. So I, the biggest thing here, I think, if council could encourage the auditor to start holding those sales, you know, we thought it was going to be early in the year, we had you do the resolution, we're in August now, we still haven't seen any. So that that's that's really, David Hayes' office as far as filing the foreclosures and filing through, they're they're just doing fantastic. We need that follow-through from the auditor's office.
And I think I also remember that we did push at that time because they had the state property reassessment was going on and he had, his plate was pretty full with that, but if if council's okay, I don't mind stopping by and talking to David this next week and at least getting a sense of where he's at with that and getting back to us at our next council meeting.
I think that would be most helpful for us as...
Sure, yeah. So if I under, so refreshment of the process, if if these properties turn over to state, there's a time period after that where he can go ahead and have the auditor...
There's supposed to be a sale at least once a year where those properties are offered to the public, and it doesn't necessarily have to be the city that comes in and buys them. You know, even if a private landowner, you know, you've got one that was forfeited to the state next to you and you want to come in and buy it, we'd be thrilled.
Right, right.
We'd be thrilled. It's just once they get to the state, the auditor is not holding that sale, they stay in the name of the state of Ohio and they go nowhere.
Nowhere.
And I think it's even worse than that because not only do they go nowhere, but the state is not maintaining it.
They're not maintaining the property.
So then the city is forced to maintain those properties and there's nobody to to reimburse, there's no assessment.
Yeah, but the good thing is, once it gets to that auditor's sale, those liens are removed.
Free of encumbrances, that's the value, so they...
Any any property that we acquire, anyone acquires at that auditor sale, all the land to write back.
Right, right, and private individual could get that without those encumbrances, which for many of those that were underwater, nobody would touch before.
And and properties that we can't take by forfeiture because there's an outstanding tax lien or an outstanding mortgage, if nobody from the public wanted to buy those at the auditor sale, we could then acquire them.
Correct.
For much cheaper actually than what we're paying in court costs now to to get these. And we basically take them now because we don't want them to sit.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, I just probably would reinforce, just again, for our viewing audience, it it's not a desire on the city's part to acquire these properties, we would much rather that someone in in the public space is acquiring them and reusing them for a practical use. Once these properties rest with the state, they're they're stuck there and the state is not going to maintain it, and so that's, you know, they're in purgatory and that's a problem for us.
Right, right. And and just a comment for the public too, we we do not get to influence that process, this process is laid out in the Ohio Revised Code, so the county entities and us are just responding to what the state legislature has laid out in terms of the methodology.
Correct, yep.
And unfortunately, as it goes through this, this includes five elected officials at the county level, their offices, as well as us. And so there's quite the kabuki dance going on between these, don't you know what that is? Between these various entities, don't know.
I've never heard of that in my life.
You haven't heard of that?
No.
To get you some Japanese culture going on here. So, but it's it's a lot of interaction between a lot of different moving parts and kudos to county prosecutor that he's stood up an assistant prosecutor to actually help field all these items. There's a there's a cost there to the county to go ahead and file with the 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 court as well.
They were outsourcing it before and then brought it in-house and it's it's been fantastic. And I I didn't, I didn't mean to just focus in on that one thing, but it's something that we haven't, we haven't talked about in a while, and and that's that's really our our one issue, that that those auditor sales are not happening.
Yeah, well, David...
You already authorized Brent, so he's ready to go buy.
Right. Well, the, one interesting item, David hasn't had to do this with his office in the past because not many pieces had flowed through to him.
Correct.
So I'll I'll go talk with him and get back to you guys and let you know what he's thinking at our next meeting. Great, thanks.
Yeah, that that's a little above my grade, but that's that's where I'm I'm seeing the bottleneck right now for for all those cases that we deal with.
Sure, okay, great. Any other questions for the law director? Christopher, city manager?
Yeah, a couple of items this evening. First, a couple of updates or reminders, we are scheduled for a special session of council at 1:30 PM here on the 15th with the one agenda item that we have published. So again, we'll look forward to seeing most of you next week for that purpose. The city clerk and I have been working to try to ascertain the potentially available dates for a joint session with the township and we're struggling with that, so we'll be reaching back out to you yet again. I think we're just going to have to push further into the fall, to be honest, because I think it's important that we try to get a date when all of you would be available. The intent was that we would find a date that would coincide with a township board trustees meeting, so that's just proving to be difficult. So I think we'll probably push that forward a little more, looking a little later into the fall. I think there is value in in trying to get together and have a conversation.
Yeah, I talked to Steve Miller and he said he's going to be out of country the first couple of weeks of September as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's, Michelle had talked and we thought...
He mentioned that he would really like to be there at that meeting as well too.
Yeah, we thought probably October is where we needed typically look, so. And then I I think I'll I'll let certainly council directs policy and and we'll let council speak to it, but I think from an administrative perspective, it seems appropriate to offer some context on some of the conversation that's occurred in the public space this week with regard to healthcare delivery. Councilman Smith mentioned some of the elements this evening, but again, I think from the from an administrative perspective, you know, why is the city involved in this conversation? Because it's really important to our residents and our taxpayers for several reasons. First and foremost, it's it's your health, it's the health of our residents, our families, we all have families that live here. It's access to that care and and the access is important because particularly with emergency medical situations, that that golden hour, right, that that time is so important and so meaningful, so the closer we have care and the higher level of that care, the the more valuable it is in terms of outcomes for our residents facing a medical crisis. The second reason it's so important to us is because any degree of diminishing care, particularly with with higher levels of of medical acuity or higher need for care, the the further away we have to go to get to that, the more costly it is from a staff from a staffing perspective. As councils well aware, we discussed this with all of you with our public safety committee, we are seeing year over year over year increases in our EMS call volume, somewhere in the range of 4% to 6%. It may not sound like much, but when you're seeing that for the better part of 20 years, it is way outpacing population increase. Society in general is getting older, which means we'll have more folks who are seeking care. I can sit here for 20 minutes and list reasons why this is is concerning and problematic, but not the least of which is the fact that we've not continued to add staff and capacity at the pace that we're seeing the increasing in call volume. And so we are asking more and more of our staff, and and as we would have a decrease in service, we are going to have to transport more folks outside of Xenia, which means that it's an additional out of service time, which exposes us. And to, the only way to avoid that exposure is bringing another medic unit into service. To be able to service another medic unit for each of our three platoons that we operate, that's an additional six staff members, and that's in the space of a million dollars in operating costs, minimum. And it would take us annual cost.
Annual cost, not not just one time.
Yeah, plus the cost of additional, you know, supplies, materials, another actual medic unit, all those, you know, those compounding expenses. We may need to do this anyway because we're reaching a point with the call volume that it's it's not sustainable with the staffing levels we have, but any further reduction in local services will hasten that and it will guarantee it. And mind you, as we've also discussed with council, we can't just add another medic. There, those employees are just, they're not out there. So you're probably going to have to bring in uncertified individuals going through a paramedic certification process, which is 18 months. So you're looking at a year, a year and a half to two years to to stand up that capacity expansion. So we're not thinking about this a couple of months out, we have to be thinking about this a couple of years out. And I I think that the other reason, and Councilman Smith sort of, Vice President Smith sort of alluded to this, access to healthcare services locally is an extraordinarily important component of our economic development strategy for any community. You want to be to be competitive in, you know, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, you want as many of those key elements in your economic development toolkit as possible. Good schools, access to quality healthcare, good infrastructure, retail services, as you start to see decline in any of those areas, and we already have challenges in some of those areas that are strikes against us. This is another strike that is potentially really concerning for us. So we're certainly not looking for conflict, we're looking for collaboration with any partners that we can find that want to sustain and hopefully increase services in our community, especially a community that we can demonstrate is growing along with Eastern Green County. So again, from an administrative perspective, there are some really key things that we have to look at. To that end, I do think, and I've talked with a couple of you individually, talked with Chief Riggs, B. Deputy Chief Bogan, I think there's some additional analysis that we need to do, some assumptions we would need to make based on prospective service delivery and growth in services to be able to come back and say, we think, you know, X, Y, and Z may be necessary in terms of additional investments in our fire division in order to meet some of these challenges moving forward. And so, again, we'll have to make some assumptions, but I think we we need to apply what data we have, synthesize that data in order to be able to inform you. But the prognosis here is not good, and we're extremely worried about the overall situation and kind of the trajectory of things. So with that, I will be quiet.
Okay. Thanks, Brent. Any questions or comments for the city manager?
I do have a comment, it's just a remark. Something really isn't talked about much is, if we if we had a full-service hospital in our community, what that would do to our overall residential property values would be significant, and I I speak to that because I have 18 years of experience in the in the market. But I I will say, for, you know, the jurisdictions around us, the counties that are around us, you look at their, how well they're doing in in terms of their residential resales or and their growth, it it is, it is centered in public safety and public health and viable hospitals are are significantly important to those communities, so. It's a good thing and I support our 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 direction that we're headed and that we're leaning toward in developing of that area, so.
Great, thanks, James. Let's go to council comments or reports, we're going to start with some.
Start with me.
You want to, go ahead, James.
Okay.
Go on.
We met at the CIC yesterday and Mr. Mr. City Manager Brent gave us some real good talking points to sort of bring us up to speed, the education of what's going on in the market district, the significance of it and sort of bringing us together as a as a group as to how we should respond to questions per se. And there was a handout that was given to us, and I'm I'm not going to read the handout, but I will just say the bullet points are the, basically, this is one of the largest investments for, in in a generation for our specific community, right around the $140 million for mixed-use development. Is it the the focus on community goals such as response to commercial properties in our local community and consumers for our local area and for the market district and just in developing that, there was a new program and events for concerts, community events, seasonal celebrations, public and private partnership. These were all great speaking points that we were actually given at that point, that actually include community parks and gatherings and spaces for public venues and opportunities within that market district. Again, public investments, we there was another talking point, net gain for public institutions. And obviously, as as this area progresses and and improves in its development and its and its resources and what it's offering to the community, the tax base obviously to help our city and our overall financing. And then finally, the the fact that it is a five-year outreach, so it's a plan. And I, and that that was extremely helpful, I want to thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that. Not to say I'm challenged, but I would say that that, I I like the idea of of us all saying the same thing, you know, for for me saying one thing in my opinion about the market district and then somebody else saying something, well, you know, I have a personal feeling about it, and then they're they're voicing that. I think it helps, it helps, it helps us all within the CIC to stay professional, goal directed in specific. With that being said, that's all I have, basically. Oh, and I want to thank, I don't know who to thank, but the city, it took, I, you, I live on the east side of town, that market street just got paved today. You wouldn't believe what that was doing to the cars that were even just parked anywhere near that. So with that being said, just really appreciate the the work that has been done and was committed to paving markets. No, no, not Market Street, I'm sorry, it was Second Street.
Second Street, right.
Second Street.
Market's coming.
Market's not paved.
It is not.
It's a little rough still.
We just say.
Commandments.
I'm sorry, I got marketing, and I live the next street over and I'm like, oh my. But anyway, with that being said, it was, it looks good and it's just the, it's it's huge, it's a huge step. It says a lot for that, for that side of town, so, yeah.
Great.
But that okay.
Thanks, James. Ethan?
So just want to thank the Xenia PD, especially for August 3rd, they came out to, they brought the, I'm going to butcher this, Bearcat, is that correct?
No, it's, it's Jake, it's our tactical...
Jake, whatever it's, yeah, I don't know. I looked at it, I was like, that's all we want, that's right. That was in the discussion, that's why it's on the mind for a pleasure creation. That was in the discussion, that's why it's on the mind for a pleasure creation. Working Xenia PD coming out for Trail Life, my nephews are in it and a bunch of boys from the Xenia are in it and it's Grey Scouts essentially. They came out and talked about the PT requirement and brought Jake out and let them kind of look at it and see it and brought some gear and showed them and the kids loved it. I think the coolest part though, for me, was when I was there just to see how old it is and to look and to know of how many times it's been, you know, used and shot at and this is something that we definitely need to update to protect our folks in uniform. So I mean, just very old, I mean, I haven't seen a dashboard like that in a car in many, many a year. It's from 1970s, I think, if that's correct.
So, you know, when the nuke drops, it's still gonna function because the circuitry's gonna take all radiation, you'd be fine.
That and the French. Corrected. That is all I have. Anything else Ethan?
Mr. Vice President?
Sure.
Councilwoman Serise, welcome.
Oh, thank you, thanks for coming down. Yes, yes, we just wrapped up at the school, so it's great to have a great turnout.
So I'm just gonna ask you to, we had an opportunity to meet with Dayton Fire and-
Brad French, yeah.
Yeah, so you want to just share with the rest of the council about that?
Yeah, we had a great meeting, basically Mr. French and then he brought along, I think it was an EMT that's part of their paramedicine program because they have one paramedic, I believe, and an EMT, if I'm not mistaken. And so we got to discuss how their program got started, the funding, the population it serves, how they vet their folks, how long their folks are usually enrolled and what they need to do to, what the metrics are, what seems to be successful for them when they're finally discharged from the program. It was excellent presentation, they went ahead and forwarded their slides to us and gave us some resources and I think we had a good discussion. So moving forward, we'll, you know, try to figure out what's gonna work best for our city because of course the needs, the demographics are different city to city and then, you know, what our needs are might be a little bit different, but gave us a lot of great insights and good starts. So we're excited about that moving forward, yeah.
That was a great meeting, we had folks from our fire and our staff and council there with them and just thanks to Dayton for hosting that, taking time out from their folks and making them available. But anyways, there's been a lot of discussion about going into paramedicine and those types of things. It was good to at least talk to an organization that stepped out into that and some of their experiences with that.
And out of that, what was nice is I did go ahead and take up the invitation and got to ride along with our fire department, Station 1, and then got to visit 2 and the very first call out, I have to say, obviously due to HIPAA, won't disclose any names, but it was funny. It was a home health aide that made the call, very good call on one of our citizens. And so we showed up and the person was giving the information to our paramedic and it was funny, she kept looking at me and I kept looking at her and she said, "Oh, Mrs. Serise." And I said, "Oh, Lauren," and realized she was my former student from like 20 years ago. Yes, yeah, she was really surprised that I wasn't her patient, actually, no, I'm kidding. And then I remembered her name, so it was helpful for everybody, so that was really, it was really cool. But it was great being with them, they do a fabulous job with the resources that they have, so wow. And they work hard and they try to keep, they keep the station in pristine shape and they have jobs to do and boy, do they do, they take everything absolutely serious that they do. And they seem to be very respected in the community, everywhere we went, folks knew them. It was an awesome experience, I was so impressed, just so impressed, yeah, they were great, so.
Great, thanks, thanks, babe.
Vice President?
All right, my turn. Hey, Mr. Fortner, thank you and your staff for that.
Yes.
I look forward to looking at that and I do have a question later, if I can see after the meeting. Okay, so just a couple of things, just got to visit the county fair and that's a lot of fun. A little smaller, I gotta admit. So maybe we can talk to the fair board or figure out, there's gotta be a plan to increase the size of that venue. It's just, seems really small. But anyway, moving on, and they did collect a lot of food that Wednesday, I saw oodles of food. What pantry does that go to, do we know?
I think it starts with the fish pantry and then goes out from there.
Cool, yeah, it was great to throw a couple of cans in and get in half rice, so thank you for them for doing that, I really do appreciate that. And then, you know, the resident that lives on Arizona that spoke, so I want to share with you, you know, I've been a business owner for a long time and when I first started my company, I moved out of my home and I rented space in a strip mall. And we have strip centers in Xenia. And I think the problem with that is if you're a startup company, okay, you're personally responsible for everything financially. You sign your name as the owner, your social security number, you give the credit for that. You're responsible for your business, if it lasts a year or two years. And I think what happens is these strip centers, a lot of them are corporations that are not vested in our community, they're elsewhere. And I think what happens is they want that two to three-year commitment from a renter that's not able to do that and that's why you see a lot of small companies, just they start out and they fail and then they close up. And then that landlord stuck with trying to pursue the revenue of that lease agreement. So that's my, my experience as a business owner. And so I think that that's kind of the issue that we have with a lot of vacancies in business in our community and you'll attest to that, is it's problematic because there's responsibility from both parties. So we'll try to work with that a little bit there, but that's just kind of what I understood. And then getting back to what I was heading on earlier and kind of passionate about the healthcare situation is every one of us up here, our number one concern is the care and safety of our residents and everything that we have always voted for, it's safety first. It's backing up our police department, giving them the resources that they need, the manpower that they need to keep us safe. It's backing up our fire department and giving them the equipment that they need and helping them to handle the increased volume. It's the percentage just keeps going up every year on calls and a lot of calls are legitimate, but then a lot of calls are not and so they have to filter that out using dispatch and stuff. But everything that we've done is top of mind for the safety of our citizens. So we're gonna advocate for healthcare, you know, personally, I think that's one of our number one priorities at this time and getting our market district up and running and so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Wes.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. A couple of things to report, on Tuesday the 30th, I also attended the fair, it was the elected officials' evening, so spent a couple hours there talking to folks and just a lot of meet and greet. Thursday, August 1st, was the Miami Valley Regional Planning Committee, that was their monthly meeting, I am the representative there. Honestly, nothing to report from that meeting, as they said, it was probably their fastest meeting in history, we were in and out very quickly, there was no real updates at this time. On Monday, August 5th, participated in the swearing-in of our newest lieutenant for our fire department, so congratulations to Lieutenant Triplett, I'm very excited for him. That very same afternoon, participated in the retirement ceremony for Lieutenant Doug Brown and I just wanted to publicly thank him for his service to this community. He's also has served our country, he's been here in the Xenia area for not quite, but almost 30 years and he has done a tremendous job here in our fire department and being a leader amongst our fire department. So thank you publicly to him. Tuesday, the 6th, was X-RIC Committee. We kind of discussed some upcoming things with Harvest on Main, of course, we talked about the need for volunteers for that, talked about the adopt, the adopt Blue in Xenia, I can't think right now, the Adopt a Spot, not Pot.
Right.
Just want to clarify that.
Those dispensaries are in Dayton now, not in Xenia, they did own it in Dayton.
Just to clarify, just anyway, I'm gonna skip ahead because now I'm distracted. One thing we wanted to highlight, there's a young man from our high school, from Xenia High School, who is working on creating a music fest at Shawnee Park and the X-RIC Committee really wants to support him and encourage him in the work that he's trying to do. I'm excited to see somebody just taking initiative and putting something aboard, him and his friends have a band, they've invited other bands, so stay tuned for more details about that and also stay tuned for tree sale and for the tree sales coming up, I believe, end of August, early September, we'll start that. Today, I was hoping to stop by, but I did not get to, but Project Thrive, Amanda Dunaway, she works with the schools for a lot of our kids that are not in permanent housing, transitional housing. She put together, helped put together an event out at Lexington Park today. There was all kinds of giveaways, backpacks, school supplies, food, there was haircuts, just a lot happening. I have friends that went, my own child was there with our sitter and it just, I've heard it was a great success. So I just wanted to congratulate everyone, thank everyone who participated in that and specifically thank Amanda and the work that she's doing with our students. I also wanted to thank Brian publicly for just the work on the next plan, it looks great, congratulations. I know you put a lot of work into that. And last, I wanted to just extend my condolences to the Hagler family, retired Judge Hagler passed away this last week. That's, he is important to our family, he did my son's adoption, that was our first adoption and just is a very specific chapter in our lives, so. And he also, we have a lot of adoption in our family and extended family and he was a part of those. So he's a part of our family's story and he will be missed, so I wanted to mention that in the loss in our community. Are you gonna talk about the community service or should I? August 18th, it's a Sunday morning, I would want to make sure that we invite everyone out to Shawnee Park at 10:30. It's a community worship service, there's about 15 churches that are participating and closing their doors at their church locations and coming together at the park. You don't have to be one of those church members, but just, it's an incredible opportunity. 800,000 people come out and just do church together and it's, there's about 600 seats under the pavilion, but they're not-
Casual setting, don't have to be dressed up.
Yep, a lot of people bring their lawn chairs if they don't want to be in the, inside the pavilion.
What time is that, sir?
10:30. So-
Family-friendly, bring your kids, great music.
It's just encouraging, every time I've gone, I walk away refreshed and encouraged to see people coming together and doing life together, worshiping together, it's not just one denomination, there's a lot of denominations that come out. So it is a beautiful thing and if you haven't been, you're missing out, so please come.
And kudos to Home Church on Home Avenue, the whole, Pastor Chaz and his whole crew had this as a, just a great idea for the community and stepped up and said, "Let's get going," a couple of years ago. And he has kept working with everybody through that whole time. The African-American Administrative Association's been very involved as well, too, and just excited about this. So if you have an opportunity to come and join us with that, feel free at that time. Thanks, everybody, for what you're doing. Brent, you know, it's interesting as we've, like Wes was saying, these priorities, I've lived in Xenia for 40 years now and, you know, a lot of times you, as a resident, you're not even necessarily aware of much of what goes on in government, right? I mean, your interaction may be, yeah, gee, I see a fire truck going down the street, I wonder where that's going to or, you know, one of our police officers pulled somebody over and you're sort of just driving by and seeing that, right? You're, you know, your trash is picked up, you're not really too aware of what's going on with that, there's this leaf thing, I sure hope the snow is plowed, don't necessarily know who did that or why that happened, but it seems to happen. And, you know, when you turn the spigots on, you always expect the water to be there 100% of the time, right? And you, you know, put things down in your sink and you're expecting it to go away 100% of the time as well, too, right? Sometimes that doesn't happen and most of the time that has to do with the plumbing in your own house, but not necessarily someone else. All those things, somebody's managing that here in the city. And either our folks are directly involved, providing those services or they're directly involved managing a contract with someone and keeping them accountable for providing those services 100% of the time, not 90%, not 80%, 100% of the time. And we all anticipate when we go into the dispatch center and we make that 911 call, that that phone is gonna be picked up 100% of the time, right? And that that person that's gonna be answering that phone is going to help us with whatever that issue and who knows what those spectrum of those issues are, right? And that dispatch person at the other end of that phone has to in real time figure out how they address that and who they're gonna be contacting and we have to have a network that 100% of the time is gonna allow them to connect who they're gonna be talking to and to get that help there. So this infrastructure that provides all of this is managed by our city personnel, right? And a lot of times I think while the citizens don't think about this, it's because the service is there 100% of the time. And it's only this one-off time where you may be a little bit chagrined that my street didn't get plowed, you know, by 6:00 AM so I could've got out of my driveway to go to work that day and realizing every street in the city needs to be plowed, right? Maybe yours didn't get that done at that time, but we're not thinking about a lot of the rest of it. I'll just say for the, with all those things we're involved with, I never would have thought that we would be as involved with the healthcare discussions as we are right now. And this isn't necessarily, we don't provide healthcare with the city, we provide, you know, first response and transport, but we hand that off to either public or private entities at that point, they're providing that. But there comes a point where we need to be an advocate for our community and the county can be an advocate for the county, but we're an advocate for our municipality as well. So a lot of times we don't have any levers to pull with that, but at least we can be a consolidated advocate for our community and voice some opinions directly on that. And so more discussions are going on, I just want to say, I believe all of us on council want to have the best healthcare that can be provided here for our community and with the access, that's ready access to us as well, too, and we've discussed that and that's one of our priorities and we've talked that over with our staff as well, too. And we're interested in talking to any entities that are willing to come to our community and provide that. And so, but once again, that's a whole series of discussions that haven't necessarily happened in the past. And so we got a lot of getting up to steam on that and working that and trying to work that into a very tight schedule with everything else that's happening, too. So I just wanted to tell our staff, kudos, thanks for being, yeah, outstanding job. I want to thank the mayor and for taking the lead with us and our council on that and Councilwoman Serise with her medical background to step in here with us as well, too, and more to come with that. So we will be having a executive session tonight and that's gonna be to discuss the purchase or the sale of property for the Ohio Revised Code 121.22G. So we are going-
Before we do that, can I ask Brent a quick question?
Yes, go ahead, yes.
At the last meeting, I had asked about the appeal process for the stormwater charges, have we set that up yet?
We've had some initial discussions, Denette's been out a fair amount, so there are a few things we have to run by her as she was out ill, I don't want to put it on her, but we were waiting on some follow-up discussions, so progress but not complete.
I'll also add that we've fielded a lot of calls from customers who do have those scenarios where they have multiple lots, adjacent lots and we are documenting that in many cases, starting to make some adjustments knowing that ultimately we're gonna land with a policy that will facilitate some consolidation of those lots. So we are trying to take care of customers now and I'd just say, come back later. But there are some things that we still need to work out to officially amend that policy and get those things in place.
So just looking at one of the bills from one of the clients of ours essentially for the stormwater, they had six parcels on one bill, it's like, well, you know, $20 on each one of those parcels, so I just wanted to double-check it, that was all I had, sorry. Not to interrupt you.
No, 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 and Ryan, we've had some discussion on that as well, too. And once again, as we look at those tens of thousands of parcels that we have in the city, there's some of these one-off situations. I know we have some commercial industrial customers that have retention detention bonds and they'd like to come back and look at adjustments on the fact that they're actually managing storm- and they like to come back and look at adjustments on the fact that they're actually managing stormwater within their facilities as well, too. So more ongoing with that, too. I think there's some good hope that this can be handled administratively by the staff under the current legislation. We're kind of waiting for the staff to come back to us. If there's some modification to the ordinance that we passed, we'll wait on their recommendation.
So should we have folks contact you, then, just like put them on a list? Yeah, if they reach out to utility billing, we're starting to address those concerns. Yep. Just a mission. Sorry.
And I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Brian Forster, nice work on the next plan. As you know, for the public that may want a copy, should they come see you or I can buy them copies that I don't care. I can pay for it, but...
They can see you.
They can see you. Fantastic. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, James. Thank you. All right, so I'd like to, is someone willing to make a motion for us to enter an executive?
I move you go into executive session.
Okay.
I would like to second that, please.
Second it by a point. Cerise?
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor May?
President Ursula?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna go into executive. We will be coming out of executive. We have no further business.